Yeah, that's not 409.
That's Beach Boys.
Yeah, but that's not 409. Is that 409?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, it is.
That'll be the next.
Yeah, but you got 350 in yours. Or 305.
I got a whole list of car songs.
Yeah.
Because I still got the 8-track.
You know. Awesome.
Told you whole school, man.
Does it work, the 8-track?
Yeah.
Oh, that's incredible. That's awesome.
Are we on?
Yeah, and the regular 8-tracks, it works. It's beautiful, my two little speakers. So am I. Hi there. How are you?
Fourteenth day of October 2025 at 12:00 PM, and I call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Valdez.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Fisher.
Here.
Councilmember Ship.
Here.
Here.
Mayor Dickinson.
Here.
You have four.
Thank you. Invitation. Mike, can you do the honors, please?
Excuse me, bow your heads. Lord, we thank you for the stay. Thank you for an opportunity again to be here at the council meeting for the city of Bertram. Lord, I pray that you will give wisdom to the council members and everybody's going to make presentations, Lord, as we handle the business for the city of Bertram. We thank you for the opportunity to have a form of government that allows us to have representation of people we elect, Lord. And I pray that you will keep our first responders safe as they're out there taking care of us and our military oversees, Lord, and bless all of our leaders, all the way from President Trump, all the way down to the city of Bertram. And we thank you for all the blessings you've given us, the Americans of Texas. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Fudge of allegiance. Fudge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Community input. Ram Yald.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Ramal Javero. I'm a Public Information Officer with the Small Business Administration, Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. I'm here today to share a little bit about the disaster loan programs that are available for the residents and businesses that suffered damages in the Travis, Williamson, and Burnett Counties and surrounding counties, July 2nd through the 18th to the July 4th timeframe. The Small Business Administration offers disaster assistance in the form of low-interest loans. And these loans are the primary source of federal assistance to help owners pay for losses not covered by insurance. The Small Business Administration offers these loans, low-interest loans, to businesses of all sizes, private and nonprofit organizations, but most importantly, homeowners and renters. In just a night, for example, homeowners may borrow up to $500,000 to repair or replace or rebuild their primary residence pre-disaster conditions. Interest rates are as low as 2.81%, and it's fixed for up to 30 years. Homeowners and renters may borrow up to $100,000 to repair or replace personal property. That can include a vehicle, a personal vehicle, clothing, appliances, or furniture. Interest rates for those are as low as 2.56%. Home, um, business and private nonprofit organizations may borrow up to $2 million to repair or replace real estate or to purchase inventory or equipment that are damaged or destroyed. Now, businesses that suffered economic injury, meaning they didn't have any structural or physical damage but had economic injury, their businesses slowed down, may borrow up to $2 million in working capital until normal operations resume and can be used for payroll, utilities, leases, bank debt. Uh, interest rates are as low as 4% for businesses and 3.625% for private nonprofits. We highly encourage those who were affected to submit an application because once they're approved, there is no obligation to accept a loan. They also don't need to wait for their insurance to settle in order to apply, and for the first 12 months, payments and interest are deferred. Uh, and the deadline to apply for a physical damage loan was September 28th, but there is a 60-day grace period where they can still apply up to November 27th for a physical damage loan. And for an economic injury loan is April 6th of 2026. More information can also be found on our website at sba.gov/disaster. Uh, our goal is to share this information with those in the community, so those that may need it most get this information and still have a, uh, an option towards their road to recovery. Thank you. I'll follow up with an email if you're able to share the information with your constituents in the community. That would be great. Have a great day. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Georgina, are you, does he have your email address?
He does. He gave me some information, too.
If we can just post a link on the website.
Travis, you signed that, but we're going to wait till your item comes up. Consent agenda, consent agenda items. 1.1, September 16th, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
Make a motion that we accept September 16th regular meeting minutes, as written.
I'll second.
Got a motion by John and a second by Randall. James, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Department report, 2.1 Police Department Monthly Activity Report, Chief Brantley.
Good afternoon. Um, this last month, we saw a little uptick in calls. We had a total call volume of 461, which is an increase from last month at 313. Made a DWI arrest, multiple other traffic arrests. We helped out the DEA Task Force with, there was a triple homicide in Georgetown. We helped them bring one person into custody and a firearm here out of town. Other than that, nothing really bad. As far as code compliance, we had a total of seven different ones, but everybody came into, into compliances. Stuff like RVs being hooked up, foul orders, noise violations, that were all taken care of. One of them was a permit issue that got resolved. Animal control, we had eight animal calls for service. We actually impounded two animals this month, last month. Uh, one was reclaimed by an owner, uh, two of, and two transported. So for the fiscal year, we're down to 23 remaining bids.
Thank you, Chief.
Sir.
2.2 Municipal Court Report and Monthly Activity, Connie Fliss. Uh, Georgina, do you mind reading that?
Sure. For the month of September, 2025, there was $17,018.44 reported as payments collected. There were 54 new cases, 78 cases disposed of. There were 20 new warrants, 32 warrants closed, four full cause hearings, 10 free trials for the month of September for the fiscal year end, um, that ended also September 30th, 2025. Total payments received through the municipal court, the fines collected was $171,488.82. There were 871 new cases processed through the court. 825 cases disposed of. There were 200 warrants issued. There were 288 warrants that were closed for the fiscal year.
Thank you. 2.3 Development Report and Monthly Activity, Cindy Sanchez. Uh, do you mind reading those two?
So for the month of September 2025, there were 150 various inspections performed by Bureau Veritas. 24 various permits issued with a valuation of $2,539,65.
Thank you. Utility Engineering Group, Gary.
Just a couple of updates. Uh, on the water transmission main, the contractor has mobilized and is out there working. They have a trenching company that's trenching ahead of them. Uh, they've had 10,000 feet of pipe, uh, delivered. They've installed some of it, uh, but they're trenching well ahead of the pipeline crew. They're actually working on Charlie Buckleoo's estate now, so if you know where that is, uh, they're, they've moved, uh, pretty far from County Road 340, working down 330. So if you've driven out there, uh, you can see a lot of progress. They've, they've moved very quickly, and we're happy with the work that they've done. They'll have three pipe crews starting, or two pipe crews starting next week, and then, uh, the trenching company will continue trenching. So they've done quite a bit of staking, so if you drive 330, you'll see pretty far ahead, uh, the staking for the, the job. So we're happy with progress there. On the elevated storage tank, we had the pre-construction conference and issued the notice to proceed on September 8th. I've been trying to get in contact with them. We should be receiving submittals by now, um, having a little difficulty with communication with them, so we're working on that. Hopefully, we can get them headed the right direction, but just wanted to give you that update. Uh, on the wastewater treatment plant, we had the pre-construction conference last week and issued the notice to proceed, and they're working on their submittals. Uh, contracts are complete. Uh, Water Development Board coordination is complete, so we're moving forward with that. Uh, coordinating with PEC, I'll have a call next week with PEC and the contractor just to get ahead on transformer delivery and ordering and all that. So that's one of the long lead items. So everything's moving forward. Uh, Lift Station D is out to bid right now. Um, we have one more step in the railroad, railroad crossing permit out of four. We've jumped three of the hurdles, waiting on the fourth one to fall. And then, uh, on SH 29, the water and sewer improvements, that one's out to bid, opens later this month. So we'll have a recommendation for award for Lift Station D and for, uh, Highway 29 Water and Sewer at your next meeting.
Thank you. Gary, you have any question? Counsel? 2.4 Utility Department Report and Monthly Activity, Adam.
We had six water leaks this month. Pumped a little over 14 million gallons of water. We had to rebuild a booster pump at our standpipe, completed 169 work orders. Buckley, we were able to hire two more guys, so we're almost to full staff now. Uh, the headwater subdivision is almost complete on the water side of it. They've got pressure testing and, uh, samples to do, and then one tie-in, and they'll be complete.
Who?
Is that still a dead end line?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Adam. 2.5 Current Financial Status of the City, Georgina.
For the month of September 2025, in the general operating accounts, we have $2,915,723.37. In the enterprise or utility fund accounts, $24,446,45.14. Fine total of $27,356,368.51. We're also provided with a quarterly statement of investments or RCBs that we currently have in file that are also in your packet under the quarterly reports for, um, the balance, on the balance sheet. So those balances reflect on the balance sheet as well. But on the spreadsheet that was provided on your dais, it has the maturity dates and the interest that are paid on those CDs as well that require, um, to report on quarterly.
Thank you. 3.1 Discuss and Consider Agreement for Public Improvement Administration Services with P3 Works LLC for the Village Subdivision.
So this is our pit administrator for the new pit that we're putting in for the village. And, uh, the contract's pretty standard. Worked with P3 several different situations. The most important provision for y'all is under Article 3, 3.3, where it says the only source of the fees that P3 will be paid will be from the district, from the pit, or straight from the developer. And if, may not remember, but when we did all the documents last month that we set up, one of the things we did was a PSA, Professional Services Agreement, which sets up a fund so that the P3 Works gets paid, um, out of that fund moving forward. So the important thing is, is there's no out-of-pocket expense from the city. The city's general budget has nothing to do with this. This is going to be paid basically by the developer.
That developer has made that, um, deposit, the $40,000 requirement per agreement, has made the deposit with the city. Along with the council members have opened up, uh, an additional checking account, uh, to establish that $40,000 in a separate account.
Otherwise, the agreement is very standard for.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept an agreement with Public Improvement Administration Services with P3 Works.
Got a motion by James, a second by Randall. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. 3.2 Discuss and Consider Resolution Number 602-101425. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Bertram, Texas, adopting the investment policy of the city of Bertram and providing an effective date.
So, um, this resolution, um, we just, this is really housekeeping at this point. We're to adopt a, uh, investment policy that we have in place annually. This is just housekeeping to adopt the policy that we already have in place. The policy does name the city treasurer. As the city treasurer, um, as you are aware, uh, I was appointed back in, I think, 2013, if I'm not mistaken, as the city treasurer. Um, and then there's nobody been appointed after me since 2013. I've been doing the city financials since then, prior to, um, but the, uh, prior to that resolution being adopted back in, I believe, 2013. Georgina was doing the financials as well.
Okay.
Can I, can I talk in third person?
You are.
Yeah, Georgina was. Multiple hats.
Motion.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 602-101425.
Got a motion by John and a second by Randall. All in favor, raise your right hand. 3.3 Discuss and Consider Texas Cooperative Liquid Asset Security Systems Trust, which is Texas Class, Resolution to Participate in Investment Pool and Administration. Got it?
All right. Good afternoon. Thank you for having me out. Uh, I provide a PowerPoint presentation, but just real quick, how many are familiar with what a tech, or investment pool is? So, okay, perfect. So, um, we're, we're very similar to a mutual fund that you would have, but we're built specifically for governments. So, um, in that presentation, on page three, the purpose of our pool is to provide a convenient short-term liquidity option while maximizing safety and, uh, providing liquidity to your local governments. So we have three tenants that we operate by. The very first one is always safety, so that's what we always make sure is our number one priority in any investment that we make. The second is liquidity, and then the third is yield. So we always take that very seriously, and that's always the decisions we make and, and what we do. On page four, what, uh, makes us a little bit different, and one of the things that we really appreciate is we're actually a trust that's formed by governments. So by adopting this resolution, you would actually be joining that trust, and we're overseen even by a board of other officials around the state. So you can see that we have, uh, Steve Williams, he represents cities on our board. We also have Harris County in there. We have school districts, counts, uh, counties represented. So we have several different types of governmental organizations that sit on our board, and they're the ones that hire, uh, the firm I work for is called PTA. We're the asset administrator. But the board is the one that hires us and makes sure that we're being compliant, and we're follows, following all the tenants within that trust that's established. In Texas Class, we currently have a pretty diverse group of members. So we have school districts, municipalities, uh, right across the street, the firehouse, they actually use us as well. Um, so we work with, uh, city of Burnett, right down the road. So we, we work with several surrounding entities around you, but then also throughout the state of Texas. So we're around 1,200 participants right now and growing. And you can see we work with 176 municipalities around the state. So there's two different types of pools that we offer. We have what's called Texas Class, and then we have another pool that's called Texas Class Government. Really, the biggest difference is that Texas Class is what we call a prime-style pool, and we invest in commercial paper in that pool. So what that means is we go out, we work with some of the largest corporations that you hear of. They might need some short-term financing. We'll buy that commercial paper from them, so that short-term debt from them. And so we're not buying their equities. We're not buying the stock market, but we're buying a short-term debt at a fixed rate, and then they're paying us on that. Uh, this government-style pool is where you get your treasuries, your bonds, and your notes, all those items in there. That can also be in Texas Class, but that's where the difference is, is we don't have the commercial paper exposure in the Texas Class Government. So it's strictly government securities in there. You'll see we're rated AAA by S&amp;P from both, in both pools. Uh, they actually, we manage about $30 billion worth of assets, so we have S&amp;P in our office every Friday, monitoring our activity, making sure that we maintain that AAA status.
Quick question. On the Texas Class Government, you're buying the government securities, are they some short-term and long-term, all long-term to offset the short-term on the Texas Class?
Right. So what we do is you'll see our, there's a number in there that's called the WAM, which is our weighted average maturity.
Okay.
Uh, in order to maintain that AAA M rating from S&amp;P, we have to keep our maturities, our average maturities, under 60 days. So we make sure we do that in both pools, but yes, to answer your question, there are some longer-term investments, so we can take advantage of some of those higher yields out the curve. But there's also short-term investments within there. So, yeah.
As they meet the WAM average, you're good.
Yeah, exactly. We, and we, that is strictly monitored and measured. We buy an audit and buy S&amp;P and our own investors, investors in-house.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question. Yeah, it's very important because of the liquidity that we offer. We offer daily liquidity. You can put in a million dollars with us today. You can pull out a million dollars tomorrow. Do we have to keep that short-term just in case there is a high need of liquidity? Do we're able to liquidate quickly and maintain those, that dollar, that stable dollar? So if you put in a dollar today, you can pull out a dollar tomorrow. Um, on the next page, you'll see the different types of assets that we have. So you can see commercial papers listed on the one. It's, uh, A1P, uh, P1 and A1 minus P. So it's, it's all the highest-grade commercial paper that you can get. And then we also would have US Treasuries and Securities in there, repurchase agreements, which are just overnight, uh, bank funding and financing that's in there. And, uh, in Texas Class, we manage about $27 billion worth of assets as of June 30th. And then in our Texas Class Government pool, we have about 1.8 billion. So what you'll notice the biggest difference is, the reason that so many choose to put their funds with Texas Class is we pay about 20 basis points higher in Texas Class, do that commercial paper than we do in the Texas Class Government. So that's, that's really the, the big difference there. Um, on page eight, you can just see our, our fund has grown over time. Uh, page nine and 10 will show you our historical returns. You'll notice that our returns are going down a little bit. That's a sign of what the Fed's doing. So if the Fed cuts rates, all the securities we're buying are now paying a little bit of a lower interest rate. So our rates are really tied to the Fed. Um, today, we were paying at four and a quarter percent is what our, our daily rate was today. Uh, on page 11, you'll see some of the participant benefits. This is really what's going to distinguish Texas Class and, uh, where we provide a lot of benefit to our participants. We take our dividends and we apply them daily, not monthly. So most other financial institutions, what they'll do is they'll calculate every day, but then they'll pay you that dividend at the end of the month. We actually pay that dividend every day, so the very next day, you're now earning compounding on the interest from the day before. So you're going to accelerate your daily compounding. So you're getting paid interest 365 days a year rather than 12. We don't have any transaction fees, no investment minimums in our accounts, so once you open up, there's, there's no fees that we charge or no, uh, administration cost with that. We do offer dual authentication for those who would like to have that set up on their account. One of the things I do want to point out is our professional credit research team. We feel like this is also a real difference maker. We actually have a whole separate division of a credit research team. There's five guys that sit in Denver. And their whole job is to monitor all of that commercial paper, the treasuries, what's going on with foreign banks, and just research all day. And if they see any headwinds or risks of items that we think would sacrifice any safety in the investments that we hold, they have full authority to tell our investment managers to pull those investments. So that's their job. They sit around and they do it full-time, all day. We'll have them come and speak at conferences, so we offer PFIA, Public Funds Investment Act, training in Texas. We'll have members of that team come and fly down and talk at that, at that, those conferences. So if you're looking to take a nap, great group to come and listen to. Um, but they're, they're very passionate about it, and they do a great job of it. But any financial headwinds that they see, they're on it. They're monitoring, like, the government turnover in France right now and seeing if that invests, impacts any of the banks we work with. They're very, very thorough, and that's, that's what they do. They do a great job of it, but it also provides you that level of safety of having an outside investment manager that's really monitoring and looking at those transactions. Uh, we have a late wire cutoff time at 4 o'clock. Our yields, we monitor, we make sure that they're competitive. We find that they are very competitive. We, uh, do direct investments, so if you want to set up multiple banks, and let's say, I know you guys are running a large water line right now, right? You, to choose to deposit those funds in there, you could actually set up separate pairs in there, and you could do direct payments to those. As your tax assessor and collector brings those funds in, you can have those monies directly deposited with us, and you're earning interest as soon as those tax collections come in on day one. And then, uh, clearly a professional, uh, portfolio team. We're managing a $30 billion portfolio. We have our investment management team. They're all CFAs, and that's what they do day in and day out. So with our reporting, um, the part that you guys will like is that we provide our reports the very next business day as soon as the month closes. Those are automatically posted. We also have on-demand reporting, so if you need a custom period, so PFIA requires that you do quarterly financial reports. You can run reports out to go out a quarter within our system. Um, our portal, very easy to use, 24-hour online access, and a lot of historical information in there as well. We also have a client service team that's available from 8 to 4. Um, they're housed out of, uh, Denver, so anytime you have any questions, you can call them, email them. I'm also right down the road, so if there's any questions, we, we work really hand-in-hand with our client services team. But they're, they're the ones that man the desk while I'm out doing presentations. They're excellent. You just email them. They'll get right back to you, and they're, they're there to help support. Any questions you have about a transaction, if you need a wire confirmation, if you need a transaction processed a little bit faster, they'll be the ones that will help get that pushed through for you and make sure that all those wires are hitting correctly. Um, page 14, we're in the, the process of this. Basically, it's just how to join Texas Class. Now, on page 15, that's the part that I'm most excited about, is that in 2024, we were able to return over a billion dollars to Texas public entities. So we were able to, through our investments, we were able to return interest of over a billion dollars, uh, for, for Texas entities. I thought that that was a real great accomplishment. Um, and then you just, on the last page, you'll see that we're professionally managed, and then some contact information. Is there any questions that I can answer on Texas Class?
No?
All right.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it. I might be running out in a few minutes, but I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. Georgina?
So, um, I, I did meet with Travis, um, face-to-face. He went over his presentation with me individually. So in, in, in the years past, we've only ever invested with CDs. As we got help, as the council allotted an extra position, I feel like I now have time to really look at the numbers and invest the city's money with Texas Class, um, so they can handle the, earn us more interest so that we can start paying back some of this debt service payment. Um, because I think they've got the team available that can help oversee it, because that was my only, real concern was. Because that was my only real concern was, what is the risk? Because really, my money, this is the city's money. What is the risk? And how much time, because we're limited in staff here, am I going to have to spend monitoring that risk? That was my concern, and I've had it on the back burner for over a year now with Travis. I just didn't reach back out to him because I didn't have the time to wait, sit there. But I think moving forward this fiscal year with the addition of an office assistant that was approved, I will be able to allocate time to monitor this and working with Texas Class. So I would recommend that we, the council allow me to work with Texas Class too. Best public funds moving forward.
And the rate of return on CDs is just not there?
It's just not there. You've seen the interest rate.
Yeah.
It's a lot lower than the. That's why that information is provided, so that you can see the difference and you can see that we're going to make more. I like the liquidity of it. I have to move money around to make, you know, debt service payments or payroll or do anything like that. It's been 24 hours to set.
That's nice. Not penalized for it. Okay. Well, no questions. I'll make a motion that we go ahead and go with Texas Class resolution for our investments.
Got a motion by Anthony and a second by Randall Hall. In favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. 3.4, discussing, consider petition from Mary Montgomery and Montgomery Bertram Investments, LTD of Texas Limited Partnership, release pursuant to subchapter D of Chapter 42 of the Texas Local Government Code for property known as being 251.16 acre tract in Burnett County, Texas, out of the Lamuel Blakely survey, number two, abstract number 47, Bertram, Texas.
Is there anything new on this? I mean.
No, during the last council meeting, Mr. Montgomery came in, is he not there? Came in and asked why he wasn't on the agenda to get removed from the ETJ. I told him that I had gotten an email stating that he didn't, he was going to rescind that. He goes, well, I never sent it, so it's on the agenda today because he said he's now submitted another handwritten letter that said that he wanted to be released from the ETJ, attaching that petition that he had submitted months ago. Because we had been tabling it.
We've been doing it for what, six months?
Yeah, we've been tabling it for a minute, so, at his request. So this is actually his request to get it removed from the ETJ.
All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the petition from Mary Montgomery and Montgomery Bertram Investments, LTD.
I'll second.
A motion by John and a second by Anthony. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes.
That's that resolution that was on. I mean, that ordinance that was on.
3.5, discussing, consider ordinance 234-101425, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bertram, Texas, amending the code of ordinances by amending appendix of fee scheduled by A4.006 subdivision plan review, providing of the repeal of conflicting fees in the code of ordinances and providing effective date.
The draft of that resolution is two, ordinance 234101425 that was put on your diet as right before the meeting started. Obviously, we approved the Aoka to do the inspections moving forward. Aoka's agreement had additional fees in there that they broke out a little differently than what we had in our fee schedule. This cleans up that fee schedule that allows us to move forward with Aoka here in the next 20 days.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 234101425.
Second.
Got a motion by Anthony and a second by Lane. All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes. 3.6, discussing, consider possible city concerns and comments to variance applications filed with the Central Texas Groundwater Conservation District for a property located at 2815 West Highway 29.
So we received a variance letter from, I guess, an applicant submitted a variance application with the Central Texas Groundwater Conservation District. This property has, correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, applied for, at one point, applied for a tap review to see what it was going to cost to tap into the water system. They since, I guess, put a well out there, and now they're asking for a variance on that well. It is in our ETJ, correct? And adjacent to our city sewer plant, this property. And I didn't know if we had any comments, because they're going to have a public hearing on October 28th that I can, or October 28th. That our next council, that we can go and voice our concerns with at a public hearing, and we can send somebody to do that. Or if there's no comments, then there's no comments. But I wanted you guys to have the opportunity to tell me if we wanted to send somebody to address any comments that we could have that would maybe cause an ill effect to Bertram's. Do you have any comments, Gary?
No, not really. The only thing that we looked at is, this is within the, the groundwater district requires a 50-foot offset from the property lines, and this well doesn't meet that. And the reason you were noticed about the public hearing is you're an adjacent property owner. You connect to the backside of the property. So the well's up towards the front of the property, but that's what they're asking for, is encroachment into the offset buffer zone for their property. I didn't really see any concerns, but Georgina's right. They did make an application for water and sewer service. One of the conditions of that was annexation, because they're adjacent to the city limits, and they didn't want to annex.
Counsel? Anything, counsel?
Gary, you said you had no concerns, no problems with it?
I don't see any reason that, I mean, it's a small well, it's not going to.
It's like seven gallons per minute, something like that?
Gee, okay.
It's next to our sewer plant, they're pumping water out of it, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the.
No, just no anything?
Oh, okay.
If there's nothing that you want anybody to take to the district, then.
Provide comments on it.
Right.
Make a motion on, not motion.
No motion on 3.6. 3.7, discussing, consider action regarding Project Diamond. 3.8, discussing, consider update on water agreement with Phelps LLC. 3.9, discussing, consider cities permitted water supply and expansion of water and sewer system and supply options. The City Council of the City of Bertram reserves the right to adjourn into an executive session at any time during the course of this meeting to discuss matters listed in the agenda as authorized by the Texas Government Code 551.071.
That's for all three.
For all three. 3.7, 3.8, and 3.9.
Yes, sir.
It is 12:38.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too, they're going to remobilize to it.
We should. Good old Dallas. All right, good, it's a win-win. At least I'm thinking on the right track. Absolutely.
The other day. They're not going to have the money. It's going to be bad. The trencher guy said, I'll just trench it, and they can figure it out. So he said, he didn't care. They did hit a poly, three-quarter poly line on the property next to it, the Millers. Yeah, but it was a well right there next to the mobile home, it was three and a half on top of the hill. They clipped it, they patched it, but it's in the easement. I mean, it's not as big of a deal, but it's there. Yeah. No, I didn't know it was still over there on that one. It's not a good situation. I don't know if the, I assume the septic drain filter, everything was from a previous mobile home on that side. I didn't see it go in. I seen electrical after the fact they installed it. It's pretty rough. I don't know if it was existing or, I didn't see it get installed. They may have done it when I was gone. I just can't remember the time. They asked for water, we set them a time. They had two houses on one meter, that's why we did it. They were already set in, I didn't know they had. They've only laid, they only laid two days. The rest of that, they'd just been contraption. Sent them a message so we wouldn't have to waste a trip. He said he'd reach out to Congress. Worked all day from 7 to about 6, 6 o'clock at night, laid three joints in a 45. Because they didn't trench that spot because there was a service there, and they have a hammer. They finally went and got a hammer off another job, and they finally got it out, but they sat there all day. Because the depth they were, they actually finally hit it off. Definitely. They haven't gotten very far. But clearing and stuff, they're doing good.
Well, it's, long story short.
Yeah, they told me, John said something to him about it, so. I didn't see the first MJ feed, it didn't go in, but I assumed John did, because he was out there at that time. I didn't say nothing else about it. It's actually been going pretty smooth until the septic. I didn't know it was a father-and-son duo out there. Armando's the son, he speaks English. They're out of Granite Shores. He's the one doing pothole on ahead of time, and then the dad's running the rest of it.
Put in the rest?
They're doing pretty good. They skipped. Yeah, they skipped a lot of stuff, like they skipped 500 feet yesterday just because of stuff in the way. I guess they're just going to go back with the tractor. I mean, doing good so far. I was kind of worried after that first day, with this little guy over here. Not a very good start. Yeah, that one you had me check into, I couldn't understand what the guy was talking about. Because I sent you the pictures, it just didn't.
Couldn't get through? And I was actually the one.
Yeah, I know.
Didn't get an ambulance.
I've had 342 stop by the shop and call here and stuff, just asking wires. What are they doing? They're just, I seen the trenching, but they're just covering it up. Are they not going to install anything?
One of them is ripped to the ground.
I just hope we got everything on there. I know we probably missed some services.
No tractor trailer? Go down that road. It's because the agents, the owners, they'll come in. It's a Castlebury tour, right? Because what they'll do is they'll come in to deliver it, and then they go down to the end. Drag the axles with us. Right. They got nowhere else to go. Well, they can't. There's one driver I've seen that come in there, and he's good enough.
I think I'm just wondering what you're talking about, that's a tight spot. It is what it is. You just fucked up, you shouldn't have researched it.
So it's always been.
He's the one I got for, he was building the garage, he was going to ride on top of something. Dude, I just spray painted, nobody was out there. I just spray painted really big, stop work, COB, and I left a note on the door. They had to move their, they were arguing about the port slide, they had the footings done, everything, it was all formed up. Caught them just in time. It was costing a lot. They're happy. He understood. That 16 blows, that's going to be flooding the house if something happens. Couple of them places out there, it's way too close. I warned the guys by the RV park, they said all the mobile homes up high, I'm like, dude, y'all need to go back. He said, we can, it's floodplain. Like, you're going to get flooded up here, something happens. Just keep it in mind, it's way too close.
And so, the only reason I originated.
I think we're going to mark the crap out of it, but still.
We have a neighbor that had. They got a boat on the road. It's. His dad.
Another 334.
But.
Not the Seaver.
I don't know, I'm assuming he doesn't want them blocking the driveway for him. The driveway's clear for him to get it out.
That's the one where they're in the roadway?
They'll park right in front of the house.
I can't remember if that's 333 or 334 right there. One of them were directly across the street from the T, and it's in the roadway with an airbase valve right there.
Well, and I told him.
Seen this?
Anyway, so later we were talking-
Agreement they wanted signed, the Diamond project? I don't know. He's pushing it. I think it's insane. I think the rest of them will have enough sense to say, "Hey, hold." Yeah, they, they agree to that. That's about it. I don't see how they can, but about an acre feet they want to develop every year. Y'all go develop it. I don't think they have anything right now. That's why they were trying to get everything we have up front. They just, they, when we had the first meeting, when they were saying they wanted to use the eight inch, I'm like, do you realize they're going to have like ten or fifteen tie-ins that are just going to be removed and you're just, you're going to have to go back and do all, fix all those. If, if you do get to use it. Can't just go out there and start using it right from day one. I'm, I love that.
No, not Matt.
Yeah, because they want me to document all the sub-pots so I can go back at some point. About all that.
No, I remember.
I was being exaggerated, but there's, there's quite a bit of them. Yeah. I think they all learned.
Awesome. I don't know where he is now, but that's where he went.
So, what the, the new supply plant, are we, are we doing anything to the ponds? I didn't go back to the plants.
No, he, uh-
Are we just teeing off of the, uh, the flow meter? So, we can still run both?
Been in there on a call. We're-
So, we can revert it back to that?
So.
That's going to help for rain events or something? Yeah, because I didn't think I seen a cure or nothing on that.
It's a lot of our project. Why is it moving up? We have brought across three twenty for both of us. Brian Manley. I don't know if there's a, I don't know about seven. Goed out a couple of times over time.
I say that because looking back, I was still agreeing. I look back on sixty years ago, one of the cities, the Ford City one in sixteen, they were being, yeah, forty-five or sixty. I don't feel whatever, then they got married, so the city, so then they were two to the county. They were being fired. They were being a whole lot of it with this law for us. We were like, well, we're trying to build a way up the water.
Yeah. Trying to get me to go. Wasn't part of that whole thing. Actually, mine's hard. I know a lot of stuff that you guys did, like the pot one. He went back to it. Don't get the- I even remember. I don't know. Anyway. Anyway, that's, lots of stories, but anyway. No, uh, I actually- What I do? Yeah, I hear you, but. Literally cornered him. Anyway, man, talk later.
Hey, you got the date for our next meeting?
Twenty-eight.
One oh three, and I call this meeting back into order. Three point seven, no motion. Three point eight, no motion. Three point nine, no motion. Future agenda items? None. Anything, Joe?
Nope.
Need a motion to?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Got a motion by John and a second by Randall. All in favor, raise your right hand. One oh four, meeting adjourned.
That's true. Yes. Look at this nice letter.
How's that happen? Oh, yeah, we get a little bit of stuff when, when you get here.